All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education on November 9th into session. Everyone please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item of business tonight is comments from the public on agenda items only. If anyone would like to come up? Going once, twice? Okay, doesn't look like anybody has a comment on the agenda. So let's go immediately into the superintendent's report. Dr. Glass.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. We're going to begin our report with, actually, Mr. Nguyen, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction is going to begin kicking off the report this evening by sharing with you our recent assessment results for grades three through eight, which he has shared with you already in written report form, but it's another opportunity to take a look at these assessment results.
So good evening, everyone. Every year, we like to share with you the results from our assessments from the previous year. So it's your prepared brief presentation so that you can see the results that we have from last year. Even though last year was a little bit different than previous years in terms of assessments, we want to be able to share the results that we do have. So in terms of, we'll start with our three-point assessments. And before we begin to jump into the results, I want to just talk a little bit about some of the factors that we need to take into consideration this year. Obviously, last year, all of our students, we were dealing with the pandemic, very much a situation that created a different learning environment for all of our students, also a different testing environment, different assessment environment. Our refusals were much higher than in previous years, so it definitely has a skewing effect on our results, on our data, in a number of different ways. Our students were going through remote instruction, we were hybrid for a part of the year, which also created a different testing type environment. And then test administration. We decided last year because of the COVID environment, testing was done on one of our Wednesdays, students came in to do testing rather than a regular administration during the school day, like we have done for many years in the past. So jumping into some of the data that we have, this slide shows the percentage of students tested at each grade level. So as you can see, for ELA Math and Science, at grade three, we covered somewhere between 53 and 57% of students. For grade four, between, again, 53 and about 58%. Grade five was a little bit lower, it was in the 45, 46% range. Grade six, we had a drop-off when it came from ELA, went from 54% tested down to 44% tested for math. Grade six, a little bit lower, 49% for ELA, 44% for our, I'm sorry, that's grade seven. And grade eight was our lowest tested grade. We were down in the 30, 29% rate for ELA and math, and down, all the way down to 11% of our students at the eighth grade level took the New York State Science Assessment. So as we can see, definitely a low number of students taking the tests at all grade levels compared to previous years. So let's break apart English Language Arts a little bit. And before we jump into results, I just want to note that normally I would show a comparison over years, and I will provide that data, but New York State has explicitly told us that we should not be comparing this year's data to previous years because of all the different factors that went into place. I am going to present that data to you so you can see it, and you can see how things have trended, but they have said that they have warned us to be very cautious about making those comparisons to previous years. So in terms of ELA, here is the data that we have. And you can see in that first column, we have the percentage of students tested at each of those grade levels. And then we have our four different levels. So Level 1, Level 2, those are typically considered non-passing grade levels, grade bands. And grade, levels 3 and 4 are considered passing. So in that yellow column, I summed the Level 3s and Level 4s for you. So you can see third grade, we had 84% in the passing range, fourth grade, 87%, fifth grade, 79%, sixth grade, 76%, seventh grade, 78%, and eighth grade, 72%. I've also broken out for you the numbers for our special ed population and for our ENL population. For those, because the sample sizes are much smaller, I've given you both the percentages as well as the actual numbers, so you can see how many students we're actually talking about. So let's take special ed for third grade. You can see two out of three, so that's two students passed out of three students total who took the test that were classified as special ed. So it came out to a 67%. I did the same thing for ENL, so you can see what those numbers look like as we go through and examine. So I'll give you a second to take that in. Feel free, if you have questions as we're going through, feel free to ask them if you want. You don't have to necessarily hold them till the end.
Do you have any response to the drop-off in special ed performance in the middle, at the middle school, from elementary to middle?
No, I don't. I really don't know why that would have happened. Not necessarily something that, because we're dealing with such small numbers.
Right.
You know, it's hard to assess.
Four out of nine would have been 45%.
Right. You know, small changes in the number of students.
Very small sample.
You know, change the data dramatically.
And a lot of parents with, students with special needs do opt out of the test, as you can see.
On the flip side, the fourth grade seems to have an extraordinarily high number of, you know, non-aid, I don't know what you call it, AS, because anything on level three or below is AS motivating, or if that's the right word, triggering. And for, you don't need AS. So fourth grade is doing real well, correct? Is that?
Potentially.
Or maybe not, right?
It is one data point that we, that we'll look at. You know, so again, because only 57% of students in the grade level took the test, it kind of, you know, we can look at. I would much rather be using this data on an individual student basis for this year rather than in the aggregate for any kind of, you know, discussion. I'd rather be looking at the individual student and saying, where were the strengths, where were the weaknesses, where were those areas of concern, and using that data rather than necessarily the larger scale. So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Can you remind me the normal testing percentage that we have typically?
So, I mean, typically, we're much higher. We've ranged anywhere from somewhere in the 70s to somewhere in the 90s typically. We dipped into the 60s before, but never, you know, as low as, you know, into the 50s. Maybe the first year that refusals were, but it's definitely risen over the past several years.
And one other question, I'm sorry. When the state, and I guess this is going back to the previous slide, but when the state cautioned us about comparing the data from one year to the other, was that specific to the aggregate, or was that even for an individual student?
So they posted it in terms of the aggregate. One thing that we also have to note is that the state made a huge error in this testing period. They actually printed questions and whole passages that had been used in previous assessments, that students had already seen in practice assessments. So I think they were also couching themselves in terms of the data to be able to say, you actually might see some grade levels have higher percentages than you would expect, because the students had already seen the passages and the actual questions in practice data.
Scott, the pass column in yellow, that's all students, then the last two columns are taking out those two groups?
Yes.
So if I was making up numbers here, let's say there were 100 kids in the eighth grade, the 72% is 100, but if I took the 20 out, the 72% would maybe be, I don't know, 85%? Something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I think if you're going to take the two groups out, I think you should present the balance percentage as well.
I can do that.
You know, it's just a little more, to me, it'd make a little more sense than looking at those three columns next to each other. And I do understand that the samples were very small, and that's why the numbers could be so low or could be so high.
So here's the data longitudinally, so that you can see it based upon, going back to the 13, 14 school year for each of the grade levels. And again, 19, 20 is blacked out. We didn't have any assessment during the 19, 20 school year. It was canceled due to COVID. So there was a year kind of split between 18, 19, and 20, 21. Any questions about the historical? Yeah, John?
You said that 19 to 20 is blacked out because of COVID. So is that, like, when is the testing done for 19, 20? Is that 2019 to 2020 school year? Obviously not, right?
It's the 2019, 2020 school year.
Okay. I have another question.
And it's kind of the end of the year?
Yeah, so the test happened in, you know, in that April timeframe.
Got it.
It was after we had closed school. So we were completely remote at that time, so they canceled all state assessments.
Another question. Just eyeballing the data, to me, 20 and 21 looks so much higher than any of the other years. And I question if they messed around with the assessment. Because it just, logic would tell me that they should have gone down and not up.
Well, you know, like this, like I say every time I present this information, it's really hard to, they change the test constantly. I mean, over the course of this, this set of data here, the test construct was changed twice. The cut scores are changed every single year. So comparing, you know, 13, 14 to 14, 15 is almost like comparing apples to oranges. You know, they're not the same test, they're not the same cut scores. There's a lot of pieces that, that change from year to year that make it very challenging to be able to see that information as being, you know, valuable, reliable, you know, in terms of comparison. But again, it's, it's a, it's a data point for us to kind of look at and to think about. Yeah, okay.
You, you said that they had exposure to the questions, though? From, from, like, do they always have exposure to?
No, no.
So it was just for that year, that's why the numbers were so high?
Well, I mean, it's one of the possibilities. You know, when we opened the tests, immediately I got phone calls from the schools saying, our students have seen these. Like, we, we know these, we've read these passages, we've done these. And immediately, I started to call some of my associates from other school districts, and everybody confirmed, we looked back, that they had seen these questions before as practice assessments. You know, every year, the state releases so many questions from the tests and so many passages from the ELA to use as practice for upcoming assessments. These were some of those that they had already released.
And that's not typical for previous years?
No, not at all.
So that's from the state that they?
Absolutely. They, they made a big, a big boo-boo on that one.
So like I said, just like I said, just looking at the data, you can tell.
Mm-hmm.
Scott, can I just ask to clarify?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry.
No, please.
A little dense. But the, but the percentage is what, the average passing grade?
This is the passing rate, correct.
Number of students to pass.
Number of total students that passed.
The number of total students that passed.
It has nothing to do with their grades.
No, okay, so the number of total students that passed.
Yes, that got either level 3 or level 4.
I mean, what I think is interesting is when you look even from year to year, it seems like, and I think, Vito, you mentioned this earlier, that from 6th, 7th, 8th, I mean, there's, there seems to be declining, you know, progressive decline in the student population that's passing.
Yes, and that is actually common across all districts. If we looked, if I did a, we could do a comparison of, every year, we tend to do comparison of like districts to us.
Yeah.
That's a common trend that happens across the board.
It's interesting. Why is that, though? I mean, what could be the causes? What do they?
I mean, it could be the construct of the test, it could be the, the amount of preparation being done for the test is another possibility, depending upon, you know, the grade level. It could be the, the level of validity of the test. We've always found that, you know, does the test actually measure what we're teaching? And we've had questions about that for years. So there's, there's a number of different reasons that we can, we can talk about.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so let's take a look at math. Well, I mean, 8th grade jumps out as a, a big number. However, I'd also just remind us that only 29% of the class took that test. And I'd also like to remind us that this was the second test that people took. The amount of effort and energy that was expended was probably not as high with the second test.
So a similar question. Is there any, what's the word I want to use? Any thought to the drop in the number of students or percentage of students that opted out, or the increase of the number of percentage of students that, that opted out of the math versus the ELA? It looked like, right, there are about 10 or 20% fewer students. And is that typical year over year, or is that something that was unique to this year?
The number is not usually, the change is not usually as dramatic, but yes, typically more students opt out of the math test than do out of ELA, for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's just that they go through the ELA and say, I don't want to take math. Parents tend to want to know more information about ELA scores than math scores, I've heard. But it could be any number of things.
And another question, I'm sorry to hog the mic. Eighth grade, just as a side note, is where differentiation starts, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct.
So how does that correlate into the testing? In other words, are the kids who are taking algebra not taking the, this assessment, or are they taking this assessment, but they're learning algebra and it's not on the test, or vice versa? Is algebra on the test and the kids who aren't in algebra being affected by that? Like, is there disparity?
No, so the test is relative to the 8th grade curriculum, not to the, to the algebra curriculum. All of our algebra students do take the test, but we do find that there's a higher opt-out rate with those students than with our math aid students.
Do we see a higher, what's the right word, a, a, a lower grade score because they're now taking algebra and the test is on something that they either learned the year before or may not even have learned?
No.
Okay.
Typically, our algebra students do very well.
Okay.
On the, on the math aid test.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah?
Looking at the 8th grade numbers again, you said like 29% took the test?
Correct.
All right, so I'm doing math in my head, so don't hold me to a mistake. But if there were 200 kids in the class, and 29% took the test, 58 kids took the test, round number, okay? Now, if the special ed column says 12 kids failed the test, that means 12 out of those 59 failed the test just from that one group. And that would have a devastating effect to drive the number down to 37.
Correct.
So, so I got two issues there. One is, I'd love to see the numbers, like I said, separately. But the second is, 12 out of 13 kids in special ed failed the math? I mean, I, I find that very hard to accept. I believe it, because I know the numbers don't lie, but it's just mind-boggling. You know? You look in the lower grades, you know, 2 out of 5, 9 out of 14, 5 out of 10, 0 out of 5 is upsetting, but that's a very small number. But 1 out of 13, that's, you know, I don't know. That's a problem. That's something we got to look at.
That's something we're definitely going to look into. I mean, we can look into the students that took the test specifically, individually, and we could also, we are looking at assessment data right now, just overall, for all of the grades, for ELA and math. And math is typically a very difficult subject for students with special needs. I did go back and look at our graduation rates for 2019, 20, for students with special needs, and we did have a 92% of our students with IEPs graduate, and 73% did pass the Regents. It's very difficult, even in high school. They struggle to even get that one Regents pass, but, you know, they do do it. But we are definitely going to look at it a little bit more closely.
I would just remind, remind everybody that one of the things that Noreen did, worked very hard last year to do, was to add back co-teaching in math in the high school, which will help serve many of these students. So there are already some of these things in place that, so I think that it's just a reminder of how valuable and important that might be at the high school level, so these students can get the Regents diploma and have that opportunity for co-teaching.
I would like to highlight our ENL students. Our ENL population did really well.
In math?
In math. They did really well in ELA, too, relatively speaking. You know, with the, the amount of reading and the number of word problems that are on the math assessment, you know, it really has been a, a great thing to celebrate, that our ENL population did so well in this, in this environment, in the testing environment. So here are the results historically. Any questions about that? Again, many of the same concepts apply to the math as we discussed earlier with the LA. Okay. So science, science is a, a different, a little bit different, because we only test in 4th and 8th grade currently. But you can see with 4th grade, with 53%, we had 96% pass. 8th grade, only 11% tested. That's a very small number. We had about 52% of our students pass that, that assessment. And science is a little bit different in that our Earth Science students do not take the assessment, because they take the Earth Science Regents, so that exempts them from the Science 8 assessment.
Do you know offhand what percentage of 8th graders are in 8th Earth Science, or were last year on the average?
I think we're at about 50%, just about half.
Whatever you're doing in the 4th grade, keep doing it.
And you're going to see, here, I'll show it to you now. 4th, 4th grade does, does very well with the, the 4th grade assessment. They really do. It's definitely a, a positive experience in 4th grade with, with that assessment. And as you all know, the 4th grade assessment is going to be moving with the change in the standards. It's going to be moving to 5th grade next year, yes. So we just need to be aware that that, there'll be a year where students don't take the assessment so that we don't double-test them in 4th grade and then again in 5th. The state caught on to that one pretty early on and realized that you were going to have a group of kids that potentially was going to get double-tested, so they're going to have a year where they don't get tested in 4th. They'll get tested the following year in 5th. Every once in a while.
Can I just ask, 4th grade seems to have done very, very well every year in math, ELA, and science. Any thoughts about why that is?
Um.
No, 4th grade is very rigorous year, too.
You know, I can't, I'm not going to necessarily, I would, I would really want to think that one through, and even talk to the elementary schools about that, to see if there's something different going on. If it's, you know, 3rd grade is the year that they start testing, so it's a year in, if they're doing something potentially different. I think there could be a lot of different reasons, so I don't want to speculate, but it is, it's a, it's a question to ask. Any other questions about science? Okay. So, middle school, high school Regents. I'm actually, you know, the, the Regents exams during this year, they, they weren't required, and there was the ability for students to opt out of the Regents. I'm actually not going to present any scores to you, because almost no students took them. As you can see, that the column, these are all the Regents that we offer, the number of students that actually took the test versus the number of students who are eligible to take the test. There were literally just a handful, if any. Most, some of them didn't even have students take them. So it wasn't even really worth presenting passing rates for you. We obviously have those numbers, if you would want to see them, but they're, they're so miniscule that it really wasn't even worth presenting that data to you.
My question is for the students this year, sophomores and juniors who have never taken a Regents. Yeah, I, I'm just going to return to, to that question and say, like, how are, how are they doing in terms of performance in their classes? How are the current Algebra II teach students who, you know, maybe were taking Algebra I in 8th grade and missed the last quarter-plus of that year, missed the Regents, you know, had a, had an unusual year in geometry and now are in Algebra II, maybe revisiting things that they would have gotten at the end of the Algebra I year? Like, how are these students doing? How are they performing in terms of their courses by the end of the first quarter? And I'd be curious to know, you know, what kind of supports are there for preparing those students for the Regents for the first time, who are sophomores and juniors, and, you know, some of them very close to applying to college?
So I can tell you that that is the major question happening here at the high school right now, that they're really looking at how are those students performing? Are there additional supports that are needed in order to make sure that our students are ready to go and prepared? I know Dr. Capuano has been meeting with the department chairs, meeting with the departments, really looking at each course individually and asking those questions out of all of our courses everywhere, from our core academic courses all the way through to our AP courses, to be able to say, you know, I, you know, Dr. Glass and I have spoken to Jeff and said, if there are additional supports that are needed, please let us know, so that we can, you know, get you the resources that you need in order to make sure that our students you know, get you the resources that you need in order to make sure that our students really feel comfortable and feel prepared for anything that's coming down the pike. So those teachers are analyzing their grades, really looking at what has taken place, and doing a gap analysis to make sure that they have those. But we've made that support available, so we're waiting to see what requests come from high school.
I got a question.
Yeah.
I have to ask this. Is the information about which kids elected to take Regents shared with the guidance department? Because the first thing I question when I look at this is I say, who is the one kid who decided to take an English Regents? And why did they decide it, and why did no one else decide it? And I think that's a guidance question, because I think kids should be encouraged to excel, okay? And I can't believe we only have one kid that would have excelled by taking English Regents. And I can't believe that nobody elected to take the Physics Regents. I just can't believe it. Nobody was encouraged to. And that upsets me as a Board of Education member, because I don't think we're pushing the kids hard enough, okay? I know that, it's hard to, you know, it's, I remember being a kid, I didn't want to do any work, okay? And I understand that. But there were kids who would have benefited from taking these tests, and 8, 16, 20 kids took Regents exams this year? I find, that's offensive to me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I don't know who to blame. I really don't.
I'm not sure that...
And I'm not looking to blame anyone.
Oh, I think that's a strong statement.
No, I'm not looking to blame anyone.
Let's not blame anyone. There's, you know, it's a choice.
But I'm saying, who should have been there to encourage kids to reach out and do better than just opt out of the test? You know, everybody wants a Regents diploma, but you can't encourage them to take the tests? It's crazy. I don't know, am I the only one who thinks this way?
Well, I think you're, if you're...
I might be.
If you're placing high value on the Regents exams, then I would say that that's something, but quite honestly, I'm not sure that we do. I'm sorry.
It's a personal challenge. The kids...
I don't think the Regents exam is a challenge at all. If that's the level that we're striving for, then quite honestly...
Physics Regents is a challenge. I can tell you that. Chemistry Regents is a challenge.
I think the assessments we give in our classes are actually much more challenging than the Regents themselves.
Are Regents exams always optional?
No.
It was just this year. It was just this year that they opted out.
Last two years.
Last year.
Well, two years ago, they didn't.
They didn't.
Last year, optional.
For clarity, I mean, New York State Regents exams are really only applicable if you're, or viewed favorably if you're applying to New York State schools or any kind of public schools. I mean, I don't think outside of the state, I don't know how they're, I don't believe that they're viewed as prestigious.
I think they're viewed in a much higher level within state.
Within the state.
You know, I don't think that they hold much water compared to any other state's assessment systems with colleges that are outside of New York State.
Right, that's what I always thought.
I can't say that definitively.
No, no, but that's...
But I would say that that is true.
And then I think if kids, if kids had taken a Regents exam early on and then they were opted, don't they get a basic Regents? They wouldn't get the Advanced Regents diploma. They would get a basic Regents diploma. I thought, if they had taken one Regents exam.
This doesn't have any, it didn't, because they were made optional by the state, this has no bearing on whether they could get an Advanced Regents diploma or not.
I can't.
Yeah, there's no penalty for not taking the Regents.
Yeah, and that's kids being kids. They don't want to do the work that they don't have.
But I'm not convinced that that's accurate. Look at it from a different lens, right? There's also a lens that, you had a curriculum that may have been impacted, you may not have covered all the material you thought you were going to cover, and now you're going to ask you to take a Regents that may include stuff that wasn't in the classroom. What if they do poorly, uncharacteristically poorly on a Regents test, because there were gaps in, you know, there were possible gaps in the curriculum? Right? Isn't that, isn't that a bigger problem? Imagine being told you did, you got a, you know, a failing grade on a Physics Regents test because the physics curriculum missed, you know, didn't finish that year.
But wouldn't you want to know that, so that you could go back and help those kids?
Don't you think...
Yeah, once the course is over, I get that. But you know what I'd really like to see out of this? I'd love to see comparative districts to ours, and if they had the same experience? I'd love to see these numbers for Pelham, Harrison, Ardsley, just a couple of the other districts, because, you know, if you threw Ardsley up there and they gave out 125 total Regents and we gave out 20, then I'd say, what are we doing wrong? But if they're the same as this, then I'd say, well, it's just a function of the year.
I don't think we did anything wrong.
No, I didn't say you did.
I think that this would, you did. I think that...
Well, if I did, I didn't mean it that way.
You did. So I just want to clarify that, that I don't think we did anything wrong in this situation. I think this was a choice that was made by parents and students about whether to take the test or not. The option was given by the state, and they made that choice.
I understand that.
So I don't think that we had an obligation to be trying to drum up students taking Regents exams when they're not necessarily anything, it wasn't going to get them anything.
So I think your thought process, I like where I think you're going with it in terms of the idea that you want another data point of assessment for individual students. I don't think necessarily that the Regents would be, that not having the Regents detracts from the district's ability to assess those students, you know, because they're testing throughout the year, they're evaluating throughout the year. So I think most likely the district still had the ability to do what I think you're maybe thinking we're missing by not having students take this particular test.
I agree, but, you know, I also come from the point where every one of us agrees we want to be a stellar district, okay? So I'd love to see four or five comparative districts, and let's see what theirs looks like. And if we're the only one like this, then I'd say we have a ways to go. Now, this isn't a great measurement. I get that. I know that. The number of kids who take the Regents is not a good measurement. I get that. But it's probably a measure of that we're having our kids comfortable enough to challenge themselves. And rather than say, well, I don't want to do it because I don't have to do it, okay? And I might not do as well as I do somewhere else, okay? But kids have to learn, you know, to accept the challenge.
Well, as a parent who had to make this decision for my son, for some of these Regents, I can tell you that it was exactly, the thought that you're expressing is not the thought. It wasn't of, oh, I can get out of taking the Regents and I'll be lazy. My son is not lazy, okay? And I'm not saying that because he's my son. I'm saying that because he hasn't, you know, he...
But did he take it or did he not?
He did not.
Okay.
Okay? He actually went, you know, from, and you people have heard, you know, you've all heard me talk about the fact that he had, you know, missed his math acceleration by one point that led to maybe some of the reasons why we're now looking at our honors placements differently now, because of a case like his, where he actually went from regular math track to now he's back on the honors track. So he accelerates in math. He took Algebra II last year, did not take the Regents, because the curriculum covered a certain amount of material, and he had a, you know, a very high grade, an A grade in that material. But it was a risk if he takes the Regents and does poorly because we didn't finish that part of the curriculum and had a block of, you know, and got a 70 on the Algebra. It would be factored into his grade, and he would not be in honors this year. And that's a decision, that's a real decision. And it's not based on laziness, and it's not based on an imperception of, that the school didn't do right. It's based on a reality that we did have, you know, some restrictions on our ability to accomplish our goals in the curriculum this year, and the state wasn't aware of it. And also that many of the, many of the Regents are graded on a curve anyway. So it doesn't make any sense at all. I mean, I tell the story also, I told it yesterday in our Strategic Planning Committee meeting, that, you know, 10 or so years ago, when I was, before I was on the board and I was on the Middle States Committee at the high school, we talked about the fact that the Regents, some of the Regents scores are curved, and that by definition, it was almost like the Regents were a, were a moving target. I guess I'll say it that way. And they were moving, at that time, they seemed to be moving in a downward trend, where it was easier to get a better grade on the Regents for a few years. And why are we teaching, and why are we measuring our school district based on something that's easier every year? We should be trying to achieve based on our own measurements. That's a lot of what the Strategic Planning Committee is talking about now, is the vision of the graduate, right? We want to create our vision of a graduate, and we want to have our measurements of how we're going to define, from kindergarten through 12th grade, how we're going to define, and how our students and our parents and our teachers and our administration and our board is going to be able to find where a student stands relative to achieving that vision. And the state doesn't look at that. The state doesn't care about that for Eastchester. They care about that for the state, and the priorities are different. So I understand where you're coming from. I'm not trying to knock what you're saying. But I do think last year is an aberration. I do think it doesn't necessarily speak badly of the district that we had a low opt-in, if you will, to the Regents. And I acknowledge that maybe it is worth looking at what other districts might have done, just to understand if, you know, maybe, maybe I'm out of my mind, maybe I'm, you know, maybe I'm just a minority of parents and everybody else was trying to be lazy. I don't think that's the case. I think there were a lot of variables, there were a lot of moving parts, and the value of the Regents has been questionable for a long time to begin with, and last year even more so, to the point where, you know, I already went through, using my own personal case, but, you know, I already went through a situation where a one-point grade difference had an impact for a long term on my son's path. I wasn't going to go through that again for some Regents that really doesn't mean anything. And that's, and that's the point. Doesn't mean anything to me and doesn't mean anything to the district, to me as a parent, to me as a boardman.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It doesn't measure how our kids are doing relative to what we want our graduates to look like. And as a board, and I'm sorry to jump off the rails here, but it is important to me. We've talked a lot about it in the Strategic Planning Committee, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about it. But as a board, we have to own what we want our vision of a graduate to look like, how we're going to measure it, how we're going to drive this district to reach that, even when we have external stimulus like Regents scores that don't measure that, that may actually distract us from achieving that goal. So that's my perspective.
So then maybe we should look at, then, in our strategic vision, over a certain amount of years, becoming Regents exempt, okay? Proving to the state that our exams are tougher than Regents, okay? And I thought Scarsdale doesn't give Regents, or at least they didn't. I don't know if they still do. I don't think they do.
They give the required Regents only.
I'm sorry?
They give the required Regents only.
Okay. So maybe that's something we should consider, okay? Looking into that and setting that as a goal.
And I think those kinds of...
And I'm all for that. I went to a school without Regents.
Yeah, and I think those kinds of conversations are coming. I mean, thanks to the strategic planning and, you know, to the things that we've been discussing. I think that's going to, you know, it's not something that we're going to do overnight. It's going to take several years.
No, that's a big discussion.
I'm sure we're going to hear more about it. But it is, it is, it is a real discussion. It is a real discussion for us to just sit and drive by what the state tells us versus to what we want. We've got to get back on track of what we want.
Do we, do we get, I mean, what would be wonderful? I mean, I'm, Judah, I was in the same predicament and went the same way with both my kids, because it's, you don't know what you're going to get. So why, so I erred on the side of not having them do it. But in any event, so you articulated yourself very well. But what would be really interesting, as we start to assess, you know, the journey of a graduate, and what are our expectations for a graduate, is a breakdown of, you know, of the 260 that were in Algebra I. You know, what does that look like in terms of the grades that they're achieving? You know, how many are getting between, you know, a 3.0, you know, the whole, the whole spectrum of GPA? And then kind of go through that with all the grades. I don't know if we've ever done that, if we do that, or I'm sure you do that, but I don't know that we've got, we get that kind of information or not.
I've done that in years past, but, you know, that is something I've seen done. You just, you can break, you can break down grades, GPAs, you know, more authentic assessments that are tied to your curriculum and your experience, and you can't necessarily map it to this, but you can look at that internally as well. Yeah, it can be valuable, if you'd like to do that. I was going to note, too, that, to build on the comment that Cheryl had made and that Scott had indicated, that the high school is looking at some of that internal data, that work is going on. And what we have in the high school, they're tentatively scheduled, I think, December 14th or whenever that board meeting is in that mid, we have one board meeting in December that they're scheduled to come, and I think by that time, they'll be able to, they'll talk about that process and share some of their data with us. So we are working in that direction. And, you know, that is something I could, I could convey, you know? Along the lines, Christine, maybe you and I could talk a little bit about some of the specific ideas you have for that, because there's about a month to prepare for that presentation, and maybe they could pull some of that together.
It's a good data point, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Vito, I'll be happy to get some of the comparisons from our, you know, our local partners.
It'd be interesting to see.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
If I knew that was your last slide, I would have had more questions.
Still standing here.
That may also, the stuff that I referenced with respect to the Regents applies also to the other, to the other test, right? It could be possible that our curriculum in 4th grade more clearly aligns with what the state thinks is right, and in 8th grade, doesn't.
Absolutely.
And that's the only reason the scores don't match up. The key thing that we have to get to...
Well, I said, whatever you're doing in the 4th grade.
Well, or maybe what we're doing in 8th grade works, too, but it's just that the state's not on the same page. So we have to figure out what we want, and I'm going to, I'm going to be pitching this because I am all behind the strategic stuff. You know, we have to figure out as a district what we want to achieve, figure out how to, how to communicate that, how to measure that, and how to achieve that. And, you know, it may not, it may, you know, the state tests may fall in line, they may not. But if the, you know, I mean, I sort of assume that, you know, as part of what I said 10 years ago when I was talking about Middle States, you know, if you teach to a more aggressive, more rigorous curriculum, you know, than what the state has for the Regents, but it's a consistent curriculum, I have to believe that the Regents will fall in line, right? The Regents scores will fall in line. But at the end of the day, we've got to figure out what we want and drive this district based on what we want, not based on, not based on, you know, scores on a test that change every year.
And just to add to that, we need to be careful that we don't fall into the trap of teaching to the test.
Yeah, there are a whole bunch of incentives, you know, intended and otherwise, that are in a system, right? Whether it's a state assessment system or whether it's your own internal systems. And one of the things that we learned in strategic planning that we were reminded of is that, you know, you have systems already in place that have developed over years for reasons. And when, when you're going through a strategic planning process, you have the opportunity to step back and say, did we do this intentionally, or did we get here by a series of decisions made over the years that, you know, led us to a place that we don't really want to be in? And do we want to change that and start to work in a different direction, whether it be the way we measure, or the way we, or the, you know, what we're teaching to, what we're mapping to, what we're intending to, what our instructional end game is for a certain subject or a certain grade level? So really important questions to be asking, and it's a good time to really start to clear, I appreciate the discussion, because what you really are doing is you're talking about values, things that you value, right? Hard work, perseverance, fortitude, you know, people owning and wanting to push themselves and prove themselves, right? You want that ownership, that is a trait. I think then you, some of the other discussion we've had sort of reveals the fact that sometimes systems are in place that have perverse incentives, or real incentives that cause people to make decisions to not do, make that decision in their best interest, you know? Possibly penalizing someone for doing that, and you know what? You would avoid that, right? You've given some examples of that. So there are a lot of systems in place, and to start to peel them back and examine them will be important to do, and it will be important for you to keep doing the values clarification that you're doing, you know, as we go through those. And we'll try to present those things to you in bits and pieces as we go, but it's going to be a long process through that. But these are great discussions. So, and thank you again, Scott, for the, all the breakdown of the data and the presentation. I'd like to just take a couple moments, shift gears a little bit, just to some other topics by way of update. One of them has to do with the project that we spoke about, Capitol Project, that we've been talking about for the last couple... we're, we've been talking about for the last couple of board meetings. And just to kind of give you a quick update, real fast, high level, about where we've been, what's next, and what's a little bit further down the line. And I'm hoping that Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sanfilippo can kind of just do that, go through that exercise real briefly for you. And then, if you have particular questions about the project or anything you want to ask, that she can clarify or I can clarify, you know, we'll be happy to do that.
So, our next steps moving forward is we are trying to arrange a night that we can take the board on a tour of our facilities. It's looking maybe like next Monday, so we're still working on that, but maybe hold that evening. At our next board meeting, we would like to have our architects and construction manager return so that you can kind of give some feedback, ask questions if necessary, because we're kind of on the road then to doing a resolution in December for a vote sometime in February. So, that would really be an opportunity for you to, if you had any concerns, if you had any adjustments, if you had any other ideas that you wanted to discuss, that would be a good time to do that. Although, the architects and construction manager will be along on the tour to answer any questions that may come up at that point. So then, like I said, the idea, we only have one meeting in December, so ideally we would like to pass a resolution to set the date and to set the amount and the scope of the project for February. And then, once, if we do move forward with that, then the months of January and into February would be about informing the public of what's in the bond and the costs and all of that. And at that point, we would really step up, you know, the opening tours for the public to come in and take a look, maybe doing, you know, community forums or whatever the case may be so the community can really get themselves informed on what's in this project. So that's the timeline going forward, subject to change of course, but, you know, the next step would be to get you guys through the buildings.
Any other questions or thoughts on that from board members? Everybody? Okay, high level, and so we'll be moving along in that direction. Excited to have you go on the tours. I think some of you have done these, I think I did a tour with some of you when I first arrived, and I learned a lot, and I think you'll learn a lot too if this is your first time getting a tour of the infrastructure components of our facilities, it'll be very instructive for you, really helpful for you. And you'll see a lot of spaces you probably didn't know existed, so it'll be good. I want to just really take a moment and compliment our entire instructional team, our teachers and our administrators who work so hard in various subject areas. One of the things that has been described as some of the best professional development that, you know, one is ever going to have, really occurred in part last week when we had a visit from the tri-state consortium that came through, spending three days. Now, these were a whole team of trained educators who traveled at distance, many of them, other states, and they came and they spent three whole days with us digging in to our science curriculum, digging into the instructional practices, going into our classrooms, looking at artifacts, talking to people, engaging them. And I have to really thank and show great appreciation for Scott Winn for putting that together. It was a marvelously hosted, organized experience. Our district, I was very proud of the way that we hosted this team and the way that the team responded to us. They were, they gave us amazing feedback and really took the time to debrief with us and share that feedback with us. And it's going to be extremely useful as we try to align to the changing science standards that are going to be very, very important. And I also want to, you know, thank Scott and the team for putting out surveys to students and families who gave us data that we could use in that process, that the team could look at and say, okay, we have, we have some ability to ask some better questions now, we have a deeper understanding. So, I know I came away with not only a deeper understanding for that external feedback, but a lot of good ideas about where to pivot to in the future, right? And what the next high-leverage activities could be. And these are, and, and the one thing that I just wanted to reflect on that I think the team helped us remember, and this connects a little bit to strategic planning, which is very similar, is that all of this work, you know, if it's done thoughtfully and well with the people that are doing the work, with the teachers who are working at their profession and their craft so diligently, engaging them in quality discussion, engaging them in deep and thoughtful reflection on their work, you know, that's how the changes take place, you know, not just by a decision being made, you know, at central office or whatever and then being, you know, given to people to do, but it's, the real high-leverage changes in practice are because people have good conversations about what they're doing and why they're doing it, and listening to reflective feedback and trying something new and then reflecting on how did that work? Did that improve the situation, did that not? And to have a culture that continually does that is really, really important. So that's what I saw happening through that tri-state visit, little glimpse of what that, how powerful that can be. And I look forward to building on that and having our team continue to build on that. And I think, I think it was a really great experience, and I'm glad our district participates in it. We contribute as well, we go on visits as well, and we learn by observing other places. So, it's a really great network of educators pushing themselves to be their best. Really great. I know, you know, Scott, you know, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, but I just want to thank you personally for all that you did to make that an amazing visit and treating our guests so well and setting us up for success. Also, just don't, don't know what I can add so much to what Judah had said about strategic planning. Cheryl was, was there as well, two of our board members were at the meeting yesterday. We had a strategic planning meeting yesterday that was one of our, really closing in one of our final meetings. We really just have two more meetings. We have one more in December, and then we have one more short meeting in early January. And by that time, our plan should be, you know, coming your way to be presented to you at the second meeting in January. And we made some good progress yesterday, and really what we began to do is we took all of the data that had been studied over the last several weeks, about six weeks' time, and we had six different domains, each, a team was studying, you know, six, one of six different areas to find artifacts and evidence and doing some surveying and drilling down deep to see what our capacity is around our systems that support teaching and learning because, you know, you can have all these great ideas and great visions, but in the end, you want to see them move, you want to know which ones are really prepared to help the new initiatives move and which areas where your system's not well aligned to where you might want to go. And what would it take to move your system to align? So, we learned a lot about ourselves, so it was a really, each team gave up a presentation, each team talked about what they saw, and each team rated on a four-point scale, you know, whether, whether we were just, this was a five-point scale because there was a zero, right? It was a zero to four, but, you know, were you at an early emerging level or were you at a highly developed level? And so, it was great because it was continuous improvement in action, there was no judgment, it was, how are we doing? And give us honest feedback about where we are and then let's, let's talk about that. And from all that, we were able to put together, the group really started to put together some, three big buckets of kind of next moves. You know, one is communicating where we're going. Another one is what gets measured, you know, gets done, right? So, the measurement matters and how would we begin to measure that? And then, Judah, you covered that beautifully, I mean, you know, that's, that's the next bucket of work, right? So, you know, it was that kind of thing. I felt really good about where we are, so that's going to be summarized, and then we will start at the next meeting to talk about action steps that we need to take. And then, it won't be fully developed, but we'll have our next big action steps that we need to begin to focus on. And I think it was a really, really good meeting. The processes, what I like about this process is it is a good attention to detail, and there's good attention to what really moves you in the direction of getting all your graduates to move toward the things you think are important as a district, right? So I think this is a, is a good start. Any other board members who were there want to say anymore, this would be a good time, but it's up to you.
I'll yield to Cheryl since they already spoke.
No, I think you covered it all. I think I'm really excited about the upcoming focus on goal setting and tying the goals to the vision of the graduate, which I think the redefined vision of the graduate will give us a lot more sort of a firmer and more built-out structure to hang these goals on. So I think that will be great, and I think it will allow for us to have some real transparency and accountability around our goals and also some clarity around budget decisions and how the budget is tied to the goals that have been reached through the consensus of the strategic planning process once it's, you know, presented to, to the board and the community. So I think it's going to be, we haven't had a strategic plan in Eastchester, something that we've been working toward for a long time and wanting to do, it was supposed to start in 2019 and it was delayed, but really pleased with the results. And I think it'll make a good difference for us in the important budget planning process, and I look forward to that starting this year.
Well, thank you, thank you, I'd like to thank everybody who participated and all those community members and staff members who give their time, who create, you know, write substitute lesson plans and, you know, prepare to go to these meetings so that they can contribute, and I think everybody did it at a very high level. We're heading into the parent-teacher conference season, which is really exciting. We're really moving along through the year quickly, so we're excited about that. And we are having a little bit of movement, I guess, on the ever-changing COVID landscape. We were always, it seems like there's always some new wrinkle or some new development. I want to highlight just a few of those for you. Did send a letter and you have today a resolution before you about the ability to consider test to stay. Test to stay is a program that some states are using whereby if a student were to be within proximity of a COVID-positive student, instead of being quarantined for, you know, 10 days, the student would have the opportunity to take a test, a COVID test every day, some sort of a rapid test every day, and as long as they tested negative, they would have the ability to stay in school. If they tested positive, then, you know, they would be excluded. Some states are using that, and the state of New York about a week ago, week and a half ago, gave local health departments the ability to consider whether they want to allow districts to do that. And I know part of your advocacy, part of my advocacy can be, and I believe this is, you know, it seems like this is something you may be interested in if you're interested in that resolution this evening, to be, to ask them to give us that flexibility. And so, that, that is a development that could keep more kids in school while keeping schools very safe, you know, as safe as possible. I think that's a good development and something that makes some sense to consider, and I know that I'm not alone in that belief, but all the school district superintendents that I'm, that I know in this region are of that belief and are advocating in that direction as well. We also have continued the Mount Sinai program for random testing. That program is really not growing, I think it may have plateaued a bit, it is not touching large numbers. There have been certainly some implementation bugs as you move this through, just trying to get all of the data to sync up and to connect and getting it, everything to work with an external company working with us, but we're starting to get there, and it seems to be serving a purpose to be something we can use in our toolbox to try to keep our schools as safe as possible, so we're going to continue that. We are very, I have to thank Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sanfilippo who really took the lead in reaching out to the company that we have here, Healthy Therapeutics Medical Practice here in town in Scarsdale, to create a special arrangement that this board approved at our last meeting that allows us to do rapid PCR testing. We've made that, once the company actually confirmed that they were prepared to be able to do that at some scale, we got that notice out and we've, we've got families accessing that service, I believe, and I think, again, that is another way that we can keep students in school when they otherwise might be excluded, can get that testing if they are COVID symptomatic. So, any, any family, any employee, any student or employee who is in the school system can, can go there and they will submit to the insurance, and if there's a copay or no insurance, then the district will use the federal monies that you appropriated that are recently to pay for the tests so that, or the balance, so that nobody is precluded from having access to these rapid PCR tests, which are very accurate. And that allows us to have a student or a staff member who could lose several days out of school, not lose several days because they can go get tested and if they're fine, they come back. So these are really good developments and I'm very, very pleased that we've been able to put those in place. And again, thank you, Lisa, for really taking the lead on making that arrangement and seeking that out and making that happen. And in concert with Assistant Superintendent Ori Nusso, who has developed such deep relationships with so many of the others in this community, the medical profession, the health, our medical director, the county health department and so many others, to, you know, look for resources and look for avenues to make this happen. So, the teams worked so hard and I'm really happy about their, their work, and I think this is a nice development for our families. Last couple things, looking at the data, if you, we've been tracking it at all of our meetings every couple of weeks, the numbers of students who were absent or sent home with COVID symptoms, we've tracked that number, the number of students who tested positive of those symptomatic, how many had siblings in other buildings, and then the number of siblings that became positive. We did see a couple siblings who did become positive in this last couple of weeks period. So, we have, in the last two weeks since our last board meeting, we had 220 students absent or sent home with COVID symptoms. We had six test positive of those symptomatic, 79 of them had siblings in other buildings, and the number of siblings that became positive in this last two-week period was two. So, over the, over the, that's over the, and when I say all, all those numbers I should say are over a four-week period, it's not a two-week period, that's two, two-week periods. So, that compares pretty similarly to what we saw in the first five weeks. Those numbers are pretty similar, adjusted by one week. So, we, in the first five weeks, just for reference, we saw 320 absent or sent home with COVID symptoms, 20 of them tested positive, 103 with siblings of the symptomatic who had siblings, and two of them who became positive. So, in total, since the start of school, right? We have 540 students who were absent or sent home with COVID symptoms, 26 of those students tested positive, 182 had siblings in other buildings, and four siblings became positive. So, I know you wanted to, you know, we wanted to just track these numbers, I'll give these to you in writing, but we just got these in today. And I didn't necessarily want to have to go to the podium for one slide, I'll make sure you get these, because in order to show you something up here, I generally have to go to the podium. But, you know, I'm not seeing anything alarming in that data trend that would suggest a change in course, but I am, I'm wishing I had not seen any, you know, of the siblings who had gotten, become positive. gotten, become positive. But I do see still a very small number and I don't think the trend has necessarily changed. I think what we're seeing is a pretty stable trend. And I think that speaks well for the practice that we have in place, but, you know, certainly we can talk about that.
Sorry, just a quick question. So do we know if the two siblings who tested positive were from the six students that were Or from symptomatic, not positive? You know what I'm saying? Symptomatic, not positive?
I would have to dig a little deeper to know that. It's possible Dr. Ursa knows that.
From the positive.
So then they would have been quarantined anyway, so.
So we just, you know, we keep tracking the data. I think with the, with the arrival of a vaccine option for families, you know, for, you know, students who are 5 to 11, you know, we may see some stabilization of these numbers or some changes in the coming weeks and months, but for now, I don't, you know, I don't see anything, anything, I see a stable trend.
Maybe slightly reduced, right?
Pardon?
May even be slightly reduced. You said it was 239 in the first month and 139, no, sorry. I don't know, one of the numbers didn't, was less than 80% of the other number. I can't remember which one it was, but of the total, I think it was 20, 20 positives versus six. So 80% of 20 would actually be, you know, 16. So that's actually a reduction in the number of positive cases. You said, because it's five weeks versus five, four?
Yeah, yeah. It was 320 in five weeks and 220 in four weeks. So maybe down a little bit.
Down a hair, not significantly, but not going up is the point.
Correct.
Nothing alarming, right?
Pardon?
Nothing alarming.
Nothing alarming, but if, you know, certainly want to submit it for your consideration if you see anything different. But it looks fairly stable to me. And I can give these to you and you can look at them in a little more detail. And if you have a question, you can certainly email me. We can dig a little deeper, but I think we're looking for general trends.
Has the county said anything about test to stay? Do they have any feedback?
I don't, I think, I think we're going to get something this week. I think we're going to get something this week. I don't know, I, because of the strategic planning meeting yesterday, I was not able to be on the call with the county that is every Monday at 8:30. So I've been brought up to speed by some of my colleagues about some of the contents on that call and it's not clear enough yet that I, that I know, I don't feel like I have a really good handle on exactly what was discussed. I think there was a lot of discussion. But I do think that, you know, they're certainly, they're hearing the advocacy to do this and I think we'll probably get some more information this week. You know, the resolution that we've placed out here for your consideration today would certainly give you a chance to advocate in the direction and would certainly help the cause. And, and there could be some nuances that we learn as we go because if you look in more detail at the, what the state said to the, to the, in their letter of a week and a half ago, there were a lot of conditions that districts would have to meet. And I think that's where it will be interesting to see what are the conditions under which we have to administer the tests, right? Like it's unclear whether we will get to, whether any of the PCR tests or the rapid antigen tests that we had gotten from the county for free would be continued or not. And that would probably be a nominal cost, but then we just have to make sure it's available and we can get them. We did set ourselves up well because we are a limited service laboratory. Dr. Ursa and her team, working with Dr. Collins, hooked us up and we are an LSL, which is a big deal. If we decide to do something like this, we have some authority to do it. So that's good. We're positioned well there. And, and so, once we understand more about would we have the ability and under what conditions, then we'll be able to decide if it's something we can actually execute. You know, how much help would they be willing to give us? How much financial or other help would they be able to give us? Because to do that kind of testing could, could be somewhat labor-intensive. But we, you know, we have talked about the floating nurse, which I think would, you know, help a little bit. But we're, we're still short, short on our nursing staffing and that is, until we get up to full speed and get that floater in place, you know, doing this could be a challenge for us, even if we're allowed to, but I think it's something that we ought to consider. And I've also been told that to advocate for anything else beyond the test to stay, like for example, should we be interested in advocating for, and we have advocated for, but, you know, more flexibility with regard to the distancing guidelines for quarantine? That I've been told is to be directed to the state health department because that's, that's their jurisdiction. So that's something we can do. I think that there is a leadership change coming in December at the state department of health. And it may be that until that occurs, you know, there won't be much movement. I'm also being told that the CDC guidelines, until they change, it may not be that we get much change because everybody's sort of, you know, referencing the CDC. So if that remains true to form, that's the barometer we would want to be looking at. And so our advocacy around any changes at the state level could be very simple, but part of that messaging probably needs to, maybe impacted by the fact that they, so far have been following, you know, following the CDC, which is, you know, it's, it's a editorializing for a minute, it's kind of a good thing and a bad thing. The good thing is, is it's, if there's some consistency, you know, flowing, right? What could be the bad thing is if the state, if the federal guidelines, CDC guidelines don't, don't change and don't reflect our local conditions, then there may not, we may not see the movement we might otherwise want to see, you know, because there could be that misalignment between what's happening globally and what's happening here. But it's too early to tell, but I think it's going to be status quo until maybe December, January, but I don't think it would stave a gate. That's, that's what we know. Okay. And the last thing I want to close the update with is just to thank our veterans. We have a very special newsletter going out this week, not a printed one, but the digital one that our communications specialist sends out. And in it, we interview and highlight two of our veteran leaders here in, at the VFW. And so we had a chance to meet with them and interview them. So look for that. And what they highlighted is just so very true that the purpose of Veterans Day is to really talk about remembering, honoring and thanking our active service members, the ones who are currently serving or who have just, you know, recently ceased serving. So I would, I just want to offer my hearty heartfelt thanks to our veterans, our active duty service members who give so much. And I know all of you feel the same. And so I would encourage anybody watching to reach out and thank on this Veterans Day coming up Thursday. Reach out and thank someone you know in your family or your friends or your neighborhood who's, who's serving and let them know you really appreciate their service. What they said was so true, it really means a lot. And one of the gentlemen I was speaking with, he said he had come from the Vietnam era where when, when so many of the service people came home, they didn't get the thank yous, right? It was a different environment. And just to have someone say, "Thank you for your service," meant the world and still means the world to, to, to the veterans that we're in that position. And I'm sure it means the world to all veterans. So, so thank you to our veterans and thank you for the opportunity to share a few things with you today.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Glass. That moves us up to our business agenda, which is the consent agenda. And this evening on the consent agenda, we're going to have approval of our minutes from October 21st and 29th, approval of personnel agenda, committee on special education recommendations, business office warrants, student activity funds report, budget development calendar, budget transfers of $10,000 or more, CSEA employee benefit agreement, transportation contract extensions and the agreement with the Deveraux Foundation. Is there any, any of those items anyone would like removed and voted separately? Okay. None? Cheryl, you want to move the consent agenda? Hate to put you on the spot, but.
The result that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda, which includes the items that Vito just listed.
Okay. Second, Kristi, how about you?
Second.
Okay. No discussion, all in favor? That's everybody. Good. All right. That's easy enough. Now up to item number 12, resolution requesting COVID test to stay authorization. Okay. Jackie, you want to move that one?
Be it resolved, be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes COVID test to stay program as attached.
Okay. Joe, you want to second that? Okay. You got a second? Any discussions on that? Would someone like to say?
I just, so clarification on the language of how that proposal is, it makes it sound like we're approving the test to stay program, but we're really approving the test to stay advocacy, right? We don't have the authorization to do test to stay yet. We're, we have the, this is the authorization to send the letter and the resolution.
Correct.
I just don't want anybody to think that test to stay is.
No, we're not approving the test to stay.
Right. But if you read, if you read the recommendation, it talks about approving the test to stay program, which really is the resolution and the, and the letter.
Test to stay authorization and resolution to, yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make, yeah, I don't want someone to come in tomorrow and say, "Oh, test to stay is here." They approved it yesterday. This, the program that we're talking about here is not the actual test to stay program. It's the program of the resolution and the advocacy and the letter.
And Dr. Glass, you want to say, I know you said it before, but you want to just say something about that, about what other districts you've spoken of, the superintendents and?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a pretty clear consensus in this region that we would like to have the flexibility for districts to consider this. And the test to stay, we feel allows us to stay safe and allows us to keep kids in school and we think it makes a lot of sense. And so we're all advocating for that flexibility and so that's, you know, it's a pretty solid support in this region for that.
Okay. No further discussion, all in favor? That's everybody. Good. Steve, the next item is approval of revised Board of Education meeting calendar. Do you want to move that?
Yep. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the revised 2021, 2022 Board of Education meeting calendar as revised, or as attached.
Okay. Drew, you want to second that?
Certainly, I second that.
All right. Anybody have any questions, discussions, just for the public so they know?
I have one.
We're changing our starting date from 8 o'clock to 7:30. The dates are not changing. We're only trying to start our meetings a little bit earlier, so.
I have, one comment I just noticed, it says EHS Cafeteria and I didn't catch it before tonight.
The location.
The location says EHS Cafeteria and I didn't catch it until tonight, but we might want to just update that since we're not in the cafeteria anymore.
And one date did change. It went from April 26th through, to April 19th for the budget adoption.
Could you repeat that because you were very mumbled?
April 26th was changed till April 29th for the budget adoption.
19th.
I'm sorry, April 19th, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we're saying that every meeting going forward now is in the cafeteria?
No.
No, it's here.
That should be updated to the library.
Oh, okay. And with the fact that we may choose to move select meetings to the cafeteria if we think there's going to be the need for additional capacity. So we always have that option, but right now, we're just going to schedule them all in the caf, in the, here, library. Sorry. Correct?
Correct.
Hi, everybody's cool. Okay. No further questions, all in favor?
As revised, right? With the revision?
Yes. As revised. Yes. Future meeting dates, we kind of just approved them, but comments from the Board of Education? Would anyone like to comment on any subject or anything? Joe, Finn, Steve?
I just want, I wanted to say thank you to the administration and everyone who worked on the rapid PCR program. I think that's fantastic and that will keep more kids in school more often. So thank you for that.
Anybody else have, Cheryl?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. East Chester Middle School PTA is having an in-person meeting, which is really exciting, on Monday, this coming Monday, November 15th at 7:00 PM. It's a meet and greet for parents and families to meet Principal Laboue and the new Assistant Principal Chicory. So that's pretty exciting, first in-person meeting of the PTA in a while. And just a reminder about the SEPTA annual fundraiser is happening again. It's at Mickey Spillane's next Friday, November 19th. You can make reservations. It's family dinner night. 10% of the dinner check goes to SEPTA and there's raffles and live music upstairs starting at 7:30, but the dinner's 5 to 10 and there are guest bartenders. So it's a really fun night and a great cause. Mickey Spillane's next Friday evening.
Okay. Anybody else? Kristi?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, just related to the tri-state team. So they visit each of the, all of the schools across, or is it just primarily middle school, high school, or is it they're kind of, they're talking with each of the teachers that are teaching science or just curious on how that?
So the team was here for three days.
Right.
And really our visit was more focused K8 because the NGSS science standards are delayed in terms of implementation at the high school. So our focus has really been more K8.
Okay.
So they visited all those schools. They did a focus group with teachers at the high school to get their input from that perspective. But while they were here, they did classroom visits, they did focus groups with students, they did focus groups with teachers, they did focus groups with administrators, they met with Rob, myself and Minnie. So they tried to get a full picture and we also gave them all of the survey data from, that we did with parents and our high school students on the science experience.
So they really, so they go in to just observe and talk and just really gather information? That's great.
If you'd like, I'm more than happy to share the full schedule so you can see where they went throughout the district.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks.
Anything? Anybody?
I've got, I've got one more. I'm sorry. Cheryl reminded me. The Anne Hutch PTA has a program going on with the Quarry Restaurant this week, the 8th through the 12th, where if you eat at the Quarry Restaurant, they will donate 20% of the proceeds to Anne Hutch if you mention that you're there for Anne Hutch. So good food, good cause. So I'd encourage everyone to, to enjoy that.
Call before you go for lunch because we tried to go there today for lunch and they weren't open until 3:00.
Let's all go to dinner there some night. All right. Anybody else have anything? No? Okay. I have two quick ones. One is I'd like to thank the Village of Tuckahoe Board for opting out last night of the marijuana dispensary law. That's a good thing. They joined the town and Clonchville in doing that. So thank you very much to them. And secondly, I just want to wish all the veterans out there very happy and thankful Veterans Day for their service and also to thank their families and their children because families and children of vets give up an awful lot as well. Thank you all. So that's it. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for?
Comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Comments from the public? We're up to comments from the public. Well, I read them in order and I didn't see that. That's, we got to flip that next time.
Yeah.
Yeah? Please give your name and?
My name is Bernard Jimenez. I live in East Chester.
By the way, you can take your mask off while you're at the mic. That's not a problem. We can hear you better. Thank you.
My name is Bernard Jimenez. I live in East Chester the last 12 years. I have three kids. I have three kids, one in, uh, uh.
Greenville.
I'm sorry, I got it blank.
Greenville.
Two in Greenville and one in, Waverly. Apologize.
Waverly.
My wife is watching, she's going to kill me. I just want to make a couple of comments. I've been in construction for 20 years. I just started following up on a few items here on the big project. I have a couple of concerns. Number one, I was listening to last, last month's board meeting and I understand that there was only one bid. Everybody knows in construction, we get three bids for numerous reasons. One, to figure out who has a better price and number two, to keep everybody honest. You have a construction manager on board, if he's not telling you that, that's a problem. The other thing is if we're not in such a rush and buildings are not falling down, right now is not the time to do construction where all building materials are 40% up, 40% higher than what it is. And that's just throwing money out the window if the work doesn't need to be done right away and if it's, the roof isn't leaking and stuff like that, put a Band-Aid on it until, you know, things get back to normal and we're not, you know, paying that cost. That's my opinion on that end. The second thing that I have to say was, in last month's meeting also, again, the three or four courageous seniors from high school came up and told their story about racial stuff going on in school. I just wanted to know, if it was that important, has anybody investigated it since they came up here and spoke about it? Has parents been pulled in to talk about it? Has it been resolved? Because if we're talking about something like that, it should be, you know, we should know if it was investigated or not. At that point, if it's not, then, you know, it doesn't tell us a lot of the stories. Other than that, I think Eastchester is a beautiful place to live in and, you know, we want to maintain our kids on the right path. Lately, you know, the world is upside down with COVID and politics. And the one thing that I don't want our kids to get affected is by politics. I grew up in New York City. I am who I am. I've learned the old US history and I'm learning from my kids that they're not learning the US history as they used to. So I encourage that we get back on, you know, board the way we were the last several years and let's, you know, do it for the kids, nobody else. Politics should have no procedure and no place in school. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I'll just mention one thing is, the presentation provided by the architects was not a, it had nothing to do with a bid. That's a construction manager who does, does the scope of work. He tells us how big the breadbox is. When, now we have to go out and if we decide we're going to go with that job, we'll use those numbers, develop a bond proposal, put a bond out to vote. And if the people decide that's the work they want to do, then down the road, we'll get plenty of bids. And Lisa does that very well.
Understood.
Okay? Thank you. Anybody else? Lunch, twice? Okay. So we're done. I'll go back to Cheryl, one, any more? To go on executive session on particular personnel, Steve? Cheryl, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody at home, and we'll see you in a few weeks.